Meeting is being recorded.
You're muted, sir.
Okay, now I'd like to call this meeting to order. May we please start with the roll call?
Okay, Council President Corman.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present?
Okay, thank you, Jason. So first up, we have two proclamations. Uh, the first one is National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Okay, proclamation, whereas every day more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 230 who are shot and wounded, and whereas on average there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year, with Americans 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries, and whereas Washington State has 781 gun deaths every year with a rate of 10.2 deaths per 100,000 people and the 40th-highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S., and whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities, and because of this, cities across the nation, including Renton, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, and whereas mayors and law enforcement officers recognize the importance of public safety, are most unfamiliar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their residents safe, and whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide, and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence, and whereas people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya Pendleton, who was tragically shot and killed at age 15 in 2013, and also honor other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims, and whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim June 4th, 2021 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Renton, and I encourage all residents to support efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 7th day of June 2021. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Corman.
I move that council concur in the proclamation. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur in the proclamation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. And tonight to accept the proclamation is Kim Monroe Bass, and she's with us from Renton Group of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. Hi, Kim.
Hi, Mayor Pavoni. Thank you so much and to all the council members. We are beyond thrilled and honored to accept this proclamation, and we did get out there a little bit over the weekend to help get some eyes on what we want to do with raising awareness for gun violence prevention and wearing our orange. And our hope is maybe next year when schools and stuff are back in session, we'll have a better, more eyes on us out there. So I just wanted to say thank you very, very much to you, Mayor Pavoni, and to the entire council. We are more than honored. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us tonight. Okay, next up, we have, second proclamation is LGBTQIA+ Pride Month.
Okay, proclamation, whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to honor the Stonewall riots and is generally recognized as the catalyst of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual LGBTQIA+ rights movement, and whereas Washington State and King County have led the nation in protecting the civil rights of our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual neighbors, coworkers, friends, and family members, and whereas while further progress is needed, it is important to recognize and celebrate the substantial gains that have been achieved, and whereas the City of Renton in partnership and communication with residents, businesses, and schools is dedicated to building an inclusive city with opportunities for all, and whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual residents contribute to the cultural fabric of our community and donate their time, talent, labor, and financial resources to various community organizations, and whereas in solidarity with the LGBTQIA+ community, the pride flag will appear at Renton City Hall from June 1st through the 7th, 2021. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim June 2021 to be LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in the special observance and recognize the numerous contributions of LGBTQIA+ individuals in the city. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 7th day of June 2001. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Corman.
I move that council concur in the proclamation. Second.
It's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur when the proclamation is read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. And tonight to accept the proclamation is Winter Cashman. Whoa, Winter?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for making this proclamation. Every June, the LGBTQ community is reminded of our history at the Stonewall riots, and we strive to do what we can to create a more inclusive community through building relationships in our neighborhoods, creating solidarity with other marginalized communities, and continuous advocacy. When a city flies a pride flag, it shows there is a government who is willing to listen and trying to affirm. So we sincerely appreciate that for the last two years, the city has accepted our gifts of new pride flags with more inclusive designs and continue to fly them. And we appreciate the continual work done by the Renton Police Department to address concerns found in our community. Many of us look forward to more changes which will continue, creating a city where LGBTQIA+ people not only feel safe and like they belong, but also feel affirmed and respected and totally free to express themselves without hesitation. On a final note, this year, the Renton LGBTQIA+ community worked hard to create a Renton Pride Passport, which can be found on our website at rentonlgbt.pride. This was created to promote some of our allies and businesses, which we know have been struggling so much this past year. Many of these organizations registered with the Safe Place Program alongside the passport, and we thank them for that. Thank you again for your proclamation, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Happy Pride Month.
Thank you. And, Winter, I want to thank you for joining us during the flag raising on Monday and also for providing the city with the flag. So thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have a public hearing on interim zoning controls, and who's our staff member? Dave? Oh, Brittany, there's. Brittany will be making the presentation.
All right. Hello, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to the City Council. For the record, my name is Brittany Gilley, and I'm a planner with CED, and I'm about to share my screen to bring up a PowerPoint regarding, let's see here, a public hearing to extend interim zoning controls for economic recovery. For those of you who may be accessing this presentation by audio only, my email address is BGILIA@rentonwaa.gov, and my phone number is 425-430-7246. Sorry about that. All right. So Emergency Ordinance 5974 was adopted on July 13th, 2020, which introduced economic recovery right-of-way use permits and economic recovery signs. The ordinance was extended by Ordinance 5997 on December 7th, 2020. This extension allowed economic recovery signage and economic recovery right-of-way use permits to continue. And as it currently stands, Ordinance 5997 is set to expire today, June 7th, 2021. Ordinance 5997 introduced a statement that included prefabricated and engineered parklets as part of the scope of economic recovery right-of-way use permits, and it also waived the temporary use permits that would otherwise be required if a tenant wanted to temporarily expand into an adjacent and vacant tenant space. It did not waive the need to obtain building permits for that as well. And along with this, it established a limited number of short-term curbside pickup priority stalls throughout the CD or Center Downtown Zone. And lastly, Ordinance 5997 waived fees in the city center parking garage for parking periods for up to 10 hours. SNAP is proposing to extend the interim zoning controls until December 7th, 2021. Economic recovery permits are proposed to be available until December 7th, and any economic recovery right-of-way use permits that are issued as part of Ordinance 5974 or Ordinance 5997 are proposed to be extended until December 7th if they have not yet expired. The ordinance states the ongoing presence of the COVID-19 pandemic and the effect on businesses, and the governor issued the Healthy Washington Roadmap to Recovery Proclamation that replaced the Safe Start Stay Healthy Proclamation, thus eliminating a reference to Phase 4 reopening, and there is a continued need for economic recovery mitigation measures to assist businesses. And so the next steps for tonight will be to accept public testimony regarding the proposed extension of these interim zoning controls with first and second reading to be effective immediately upon adoption, and if adopted on December 7th, 2021, the ordinance will sunset and all economic recovery business expansions and signage must be removed. I do have my information up on the screen again. I can be contacted by email, BGILIA@rentonwaa.gov, or the Business Assistance Hotline at 206-503-1742 to schedule a 30-minute planning session if there are any businesses out there that have questions or they want some help with this economic recovery right-of-way use permit. Feel free to contact me, and I'm happy to assist. And that concludes my presentations. Any questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Council President Corman.
Yes, was the December 7th chosen because it's six months out? I mean, is there a chance we would extend this again if needed, since I guess we really can't predict exactly where we'll be? Is that sort of the plan?
So yes, it's, that is a six-month mark, and so weekly, we can only do six months, but I believe at that time, we'll reassess what might be necessary and move accordingly to that.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Brittany. Do we have anybody signed up to testify?
Mr. Mayor, I have no one signed up in advance to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council regarding the interim zoning controls public hearing? I do see one hand raised. That's the Renton Chamber of Commerce. Okay.
Good evening, this is Diane, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So this is Diane Dobson, the current CEO at the Renton Chamber of Commerce, and on behalf of the business community, I want to extend thanks to the City of Renton for your continued efforts to find opportunities to assist the business community through the various challenges presented this year and working with the opportunities presented to you all through state and other government adjustments and the efforts in fee and permit waiver for the businesses to take advantage of, to do what they can to sustain and survive and hopefully make it through and thrive. At the Chamber, we certainly approve and applaud these efforts. We thank Ms. Gilia for all of her continued efforts. She has done an amazing job in working with the businesses and helping them understand the process and acting almost as a concierge, if you will, in filling out permits and applications and really, really making the most of a situation that, as we heard in the committee of the whole meeting, has been compounded with the construction issues. Thank you for the opportunity for those fee and permit waivers for the businesses to take advantage of some of those things like parklets and other means to facilitate business.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Jason, do we have any correspondence?
Uh, no correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. What's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move we close the public hearing. Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Council President Corman, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries, okay. Next up, we have administrative reports.
All right, good evening, everybody. The administrative report, the Renton History Museum is hosting a new traveling exhibit from the Pritchard Gallery at the University of Idaho titled Facing the Inferno: The Wildfire Photography of Carrie Greer. The exhibit features over 60 dramatic photographs of wildfire and smokejumpers in Washington, Idaho, Montana, California, Oregon, and New Mexico, taken by the official photographer for the National Interagency Fire Center in Boise, Idaho. These photographs powerfully convey the unique situation we find ourselves in today because of global warming, fire seasons, and the destructive destruction now stretched to seven months or longer in some parts of the country. The exhibit opened on June 4th and will be on display through July 30th. Renton History Museum is located at 235 Mill Avenue South, and museum hours are Wednesday to Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Check the museum's Facebook page or website for more information. Public Works Department partnered with Republic Services and StyroRecycle to host the first of three mini-recycle events on Saturday, May 15th. This event served 415 households and collected over 16 tons of scrap metal and styrofoam, amounting to landfill diversion of 80 pounds of material per household. In addition to collecting material, over three barrels of food were collected forth to Renton Salvation Army Food Bank. The next mini-recycle event is scheduled for June 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Renton Technical College. Cardboard, automotive tires, and mattresses for a fee will be collected. For more information, please visit rentonwaa.gov/recycleevents. Update from the Parks and Trails Division. Swim beaches at Jean Coulon Memorial Beach Park and Canadao Beach Park will have lifeguards in attendance starting Saturday, June 26th through Labor Day in September. For your safety, never swim alone and always swim with water watchers present. Wear a U.S. Coast Guard-approved life jacket appropriate for your weight and size and the water activity. Always wear a life jacket while boating regardless of swimming skill. Swim sober. Boat launch permits or for launching at Coulon Park can be purchased online at rentonwaa.gov/boatlaunch or call 425-430-6700 and press 8. For updated information, see rentonwaa.gov/parks or contact the Community Services at 425-430-6600. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwaa.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll open up the remote audience comment period. It remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by a city staff member. The staff member will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker of you've been unmuted. This is the speaker's queue, and it's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you are addressing. Speakers should be able to see a timer on the screen. Please finish up your comments when you see the time is close to expiring. Do we have anyone signed up to speak tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I have no one signed up in advance to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council? I do see one hand raised, Renton Chamber of Commerce. Diane, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Mr. -- this is Diane Dobson, again, the CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Mayor and council members, I want to take a minute to say thank you to the council and the administration for your follow-up and continued outreach to the, your follow-up to the continued outreach by the Chamber and the downtown businesses as to the construction downtown. I know this project is cumbersome, and as I have mentioned to the staff at the every-other-week meetings that the city provides in order to give residents and businesses updates on the real-time progress, it's especially thankless as well, especially when projects don't go as anticipated and the delays happen. And let's face it, this year has been filled with all sorts of delays and challenges never anticipated. While dealing with challenges presented from a project in working on a street that's over 100 years old with pipes moved, coal shafts, downspouts, lines moved, pipes not on plans, never mind all of the unimaginables that we've encountered like COVID, fire, smoke, couple it with contractor delays, barriers, work sites broken into, COVID on the cruise, subcontractor challenges, your team encountered many things that were beyond their control. But the one thing that can be controlled is the customer service and attitude, including attitude and response. And I want to take a minute and give special thanks to your staff member Keith Woolley, who on more than one occasion at a meeting, I had to speak to remind him and myself, please remember, I'm relaying information without trying to shoot the messenger. Has a project been perfect? Of course not. Has the project caused problems? Without a doubt. And I take a minute to extend appreciation to the efforts of the city administration in hearing those escalated challenges and understanding the concerns. Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for taking the time consecutive weeks now for taking a boots-on-the-ground approach and reaching out to those businesses personally to hear from them what their experiences have been like. Councilmember O'Halloran, thank you for joining the meeting this past week that the Public Works Team puts on so you can hear the updates as well. As I reached out to the council to express collective concerns on the project, I also wanted to be sure tonight to reach out to express the appreciation to your response and to express my personal gratitude to Keith Woolley, who as a representative for the city was and is top-notch. And from my layman's perspective and quick-to-criticize opinion in being hyper-protective of the business community, he's done an outstanding job. At the bi-weekly meetings, he's done a great job at being the bearer of bad news, often sharing details and pictures for understanding of the challenges that the team have faced so we better understand it as businesses. And it has been with the greatest of grace that he has been the middleman and the messenger who has shouldered what I will sum up as disappointment and angst and a lot of constructive criticism. So as I shared my concerns, I also wanted to share my appreciation especially for Mr. Woolley and the job that he has continued to do in relaying that information out to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else signed up to speak at this time? I don't see any.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. We have 11 items for council to consider.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corman.
Yeah, at this time, I'd just like to ask if any council member would like any item removed for individual consideration.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull item F from the consent agenda.
Okay, any others? Mr. Mayor? I move approval of the consent agenda minus item F. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman and seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the consent agenda be approved minus item F. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item F relates to waiving the $85 park rental fee for the annual Renton Park Run 5K. We waive this $85 park rental fee every year, so I move that this item go council concur.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the $85 fee for the park run be waived and moved to council concur. Any comments? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corman.
Yeah, I just want to advise, I turned my video off. I'm having internet bandwidth issues, so I seem to have better audio that way.
Thank you very much for notifying us. All right. Next up, we have unfinished business. Council President Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benedetti.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
Yes, the Community Services Committee has one report, committee report.
Okay, Community Services Committee committee report. This is the mural project at Liberty Park. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve funding from budgeted funds currently available in the arts and culture project and approve the contract with Alexander Cod to fabricate and install the proposed mural project at Liberty Park.
Thank you, Jason, and I move that the council concur with the Community Service Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Van, seconded by Councilmember Benedetti, that the council concur with the Community Services Committee report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. Councilmember Perez.
Not finished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next up, we have legislation, and we have one ordinance.
Okay, this ordinance is for first reading and advancement to second and final reading. It's regarding the public hearing we had earlier tonight. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, extending the interim zoning control established by ordinance number 5974 and extended and amended by ordinance number 5997 in response to the operational limits on businesses during the COVID-19 declared public health emergency. By one, extending the temporary economic recovery revocable right-of-way permit for businesses; two, extending the temporary economic recovery signs for businesses; and three, extending the interim zoning control to waive the requirement to obtain a temporary use permit for the temporary expansion of a business into an adjacent vacant space in a multi-tenant building, extending authorization for the temporary designation of a limited number of existing public parking stalls within the Center Downtown Zoning District to support parking for short-term curbside pickup or to-go orders from businesses, extending the temporary waiver of parking fees for parking for periods up to 10 hours within the city's city center parking garage located at 655 South Second Street, providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and establishing an immediate effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Oops. Actually, Councilmember Prince, I believe the intent was to, oh, I moved it, we moved it to second and final reading tonight.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading tonight. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Okay, I'll read it again. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, extending the interim zoning control established by ordinance number 5974 and extended and amended by ordinance number 5997 in response to the operational limits on businesses during the COVID-19 declared public health emergency. By one, extending the temporary economic recovery revocable right-of-way permit for businesses; two, extending the temporary economic recovery signs for businesses; and three, extending the interim zoning control to waive the requirement to obtain a temporary use permit for the temporary expansion of a business into an adjacent vacant space in a multi-tenant building, extending authorization for the temporary designation of a limited number of existing public parking stalls within the Center Downtown Zoning District to support parking for short-term curbside pickup or to-go orders from businesses, extending the temporary waiver of parking fees for parking for periods up to 10 hours within the city's city center parking garage located at 655 South Second Street, providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and establishing an immediate effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince.
I move we adopt the ordinance as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council adopt the ordinance as read. The party will call.
Council President Corman?
Aye.
Councilmember Prince?
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Aye.
Councilmember Benedetti?
Aye.
Councilmember Van?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. We are on to new business. President Corman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two meetings to announce. The first is... Both of them are for Monday, June 14th. The first is committee of the whole meeting. It's going to start 15 minutes earlier than usual at 5:45 p.m. That's a video conference, two items on that agenda. The first is COVID vaccination verification program, and the second item is Recreation Division Programming and Events Update. And that will be followed by a regular council meeting at 7:00 p.m., which is also via video conference. And that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. 4:30 on June 14th, 2021, via video conference, the Planning Development Committee will meet. We've got four items on the agenda, the first being Docket 16, second being community engagement for the Clean Economy Strategy update, third being conference of plan update, and then the fourth, emerging issues in CED. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McGurven?
I have no new business to announce, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, June 14th, at 3:45 p.m., via video conference, the Finance Committee will be meeting on four agenda items. The first is public health, Seattle, and King County agreement for local hazardous waste management program. The second is local agency agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration under the Airport Coronavirus Response Grant Program. The third is the Washington Airport Management Association Internship Grant, and the fourth is vouchers. And that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Benedetti?
I have no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Van?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, what's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corman?
I move that the council meeting recess into executive session for 45 minutes.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council recess into executive session for 45 minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Before we go, Jason, do we need to announce that we will be not coming back and wrapping up afterwards?
You could announce that, sir, that we'll, you know, that we'll be recessing into executive session.
To discuss with legal counsel matters of pen...
Yes.
Yeah, his audio is cutting out, so...
Yes. No action will be taken, and we will be finished immediately afterwards and not come back.
The meeting will adjourn. Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.